Thanksgiving to say thank you. Thank you for the lives you let us lead. Thank you for the many blessings you bestow upon us. Thank you for letting us be citizens of this county. And Lord, we ask your blessing and wisdom tonight on this council and of the citizens, so that we can take care of the county's business tonight in a way that will be pleasing to you. And now we ask you to please bless this meeting. In your son's precious name we pray, amen. Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Uh, council, what next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And before we approve it, I would like to ask if we can move, uh, item one from new business, which is the resolution, uh, from new business to just after we do the minutes. So is, if nobody has any objection to that, we will move that so we won't force those people to wait through half the meeting to, to do, hear the resolution. So with that, I would ask a motion to approve the agenda as I've presented it to you.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Ms. Talbert makes the motions, there are second.
Second.
Ms. Ireland, second, see any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right, council, we have a bunch of minutes to approve, so we'll just take them one at a time. So first, the January third, twenty twenty-three, regular monthly meeting minutes. Is there, um, any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve those minutes? Mr. Moody makes the motions, there are second. Dr. Kenyon, seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the January tenth, council, county council retreat. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Talbert makes the motions, there are second. And Mr. Moody, second, see any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, county council and planning commission joint meeting. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve those minutes? Mr. Moody makes the motions, there are second. Dr. Kenyon, second, see any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is January thirtieth, the annual, twenty twenty-three, the annual intergovernmental meeting. Is there any questions or comments about those minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve those minutes? Dr. Kenyon makes the motions, there are second. And, uh, Mr. Talbert, second, see any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Finally, February seventh, twenty twenty-three, regular monthly meeting, any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So move.
Mr. Talbert makes the motions, there are second. Mr. Moody, second, see any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Sorry, but I'm glad we could catch up on all our minutes. Next is our resolution, and let me flip over my agenda here for a second. So this is actually new business number one, Consider Resolution Twenty-one, twenty-three, eleven fifty-six, recognizing the town of Edgefield as the safest city in South Carolina, as reported by Safewise, an independent national safety and security company. With that, we have a resolution, and I will read it for, uh, the folks who are here so they can hear this resolution, uh, that we're considering tonight. It's a resolution honoring the town of Edgefield as the safest city in South Carolina, whereas Edgefield County Council wishes to recognize the town of Edgefield as being designated as the safest city in South Carolina by Safewise, an independent national safety and security company. And whereas, a total of twenty cities and towns were recognized as the safest cities in South Carolina of sixty-one that may, met the basic criteria. And whereas of those twenty, the town of Edgefield was recognized as the safest city in South Carolina, reporting the lowest violent and property crime rates in the state, with a total of just thirty-two property crimes and only two violent crimes. Whereas the county council appreciates the work of the town and the police, along with the involvement of the community, to reach this outstanding achievement. Now therefore be it resolved, on the seventh day of March, twenty twenty-three, that Edgefield County honors the town's leaders and citizens and law enforcement officers for being the safest city in South Carolina and their collaborative efforts to keep crime at bay, adopted this seventh day of March, twenty twenty-three, and signed by all of county council, assuming they pass it tonight. So with that, any questions from, or account, uh, comments from council? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve this resolution? Mr. Moody makes the motions, there are second. And Ms. Ireland, seconds, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. And I know we have the police chief here, we have the mayor, so I'll ask those two if they'll join all of county council, please, down here and listen. Presenting with this.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
Um, on behalf of the town, I do appreciate it, I know Ronnie does, Ronnie, you look, come here. I'm proud of my police department, I should not even be here, and, and honestly, I, I just, I'm gonna pay your heads, Ronnie and his crew. And, and also would be deliqued if I didn't say that it takes, I think Ronnie, you will agree with me, to be the safest city, it takes a joint, Jody and your crew should be up here, Johnston, I mean, we're all in it together, um, when one has a problem, we all come, so. Yes, I'm, I'm very proud of my guys, but we do appreciate the corporation, I'm proud of everybody else too. Thank you all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, so next council on the agenda is comments from the public, and I'll ask our clerk if we have anybody signed up for the first public comment period? All right, with that, then council, we will close the first public comment period and move to the reports, any questions or comments on the reports? Hearing none, I will move then to the consent agenda. Um, I'll ask council, is there anything we need to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Send it.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Ireland makes the motion, and Mr. Talbert, seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is our two public hearings, um, so I'll take them one at a time. If you're here to speak on either one of these public hearings, you'll need to, to come up when I open them. So, the first public hearing is on ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven ninety-two, to replace chapter six, animals in the code of ordinance. So is there anyone here to speak on the animal control ordinance? Okay, seeing no one, council, I will close the public hearing for that ordinance and move to the second public hearing, on ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven ninety-three, an ordinance authorizing the delivery of an agreement of purchase and sale and conveyance of certain properties between Edgefield County and John McCracken, his successors and assigns. Is there anyone here to speak, uh, on that ordinance here in this public hearing?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of council. Uh, first of all, I want to thank, uh, Ms. Eubanks for getting out the agenda this past Friday. I was very helpful to have the agenda, uh, several days before the meeting, and, and also, uh, I noticed it was posted outside of the administration office as I walked by, and also outside of the chambers here. So I, I, I really appreciate, uh, council's efforts and staff's efforts in, in getting that agenda out, uh, to the public, and so, so thank you for that. Um, on the agenda, uh, for tonight, uh, again, uh, uh, reviewed it after receiving it, and, uh, I want to thank you also for, uh, removing the language that said that the building on, uh, Church Street, the Neighborhood Center building, was advertised with an asking price of fifty thousand dollars. Uh, I see the, uh, with an asking price of fifty thousand dollars was removed, and, um, I think that more accurately reflects the, uh, uh, advertising and the, uh, uh, proposal to, uh, sell the building. Last month, um, I asked about, uh, whether SciTech, who had presented a demolition proposal to the council, which was included in the packet, and which, uh, was discussed several times in the information about the sale, uh, to justify, uh, the selling price of fifty thousand dollars. I asked a question about whether, uh, they were an independent third party that had, uh, submitted that proposal, and, and I wasn't sure. Uh, and so I decided I'd look into it a little bit, and, um, I went by a construction site down in Aiken on Walker Avenue on February the sixteenth, um, that had a SciTech construction sign in the yard. Nice house going up, uh, in what's known as a horse district there, Aiken County. And, uh, so, um, when I pulled up there, um, I saw a gentleman in a little silver car, and I went up to him and asked him who was building the house, had a SciTech construction sign in the yard, and he said, "I am." I said, "Uh, okay," uh, I said, "Who are you?" And he said, "John McCracken." So I said, "Okay, good to meet you," and I introduced myself, gave him my name. Uh, he talked a little bit about the house and, uh, that he was building it for somebody. It was a spec house that, that he was just building. And, uh, he asked me did I want to go look inside? And the, the house was probably half to three-quarters constructed, so I did, went inside, and the house seemed to be very well-built, uh, uh, from, from my limited knowledge of construction, it, it looked like a, a well-built, very fine home that, uh, Mr. McCracken, uh, was, uh, constructing there. And, and I know I've spoken out about this proposal several times, and never was about Mr. McCracken or the kind of house he builds. Uh, in fact, he said he was gonna build mine, uh, on this site in the town of Edgefield. Uh, we talked about that a little bit. Um, and, um, and I, and I asked him, I said, "I see here this sign about the SciTech Construction in the front," uh, I said, "Are y'all partners in this?" He said, "Yes, we're, we're, we're partners." I said, "I'm partners with SciTech Construction," so, uh, that, that answered my question that I wasn't sure of, uh, whether SciTech and McCracken, uh, were, in fact, partners. And so, that raises the question whether the SciTech demolition proposal, which we have, uh, in front of us, was from an independent third-party person, or is it someone very closely related to, uh, Mr. McCracken? And it just seems like that the county is going to rely on this information from SciTech, uh, based on this demolition proposal addressed to David Caddell and Roger Leduke, that it ought to come from an independent third-party, uh, not the partner of the buyer. And to, uh, show an example of that relationship that the county has, um, put out in, in, in several different documents, uh, the, the, um, the ordinance itself, uh, says that the fifth whereas, whereas although the appraised value is higher than the proposed sale price, the structure would require asbestos abatement at a cost to the county. And then the number three, enacted in Calhoun, says, "In light of the appraisal and mitigation efforts, council considers the sales price as reasonable and in the best interests of the citizens of Edgefield County." Uh, in the, uh, agenda, uh, the language regarding, uh, the sale of this building and the, um, description of this consideration of ordinance twenty-one, twenty-two, seven ninety-three, says, "The county asked a commercial contractor for an estimate for an asbestos assessment, removal, and demolition. The estimate was sixty-eight thousand dollars. As the appraised price minus the abatement estimate demonstrates that the original deal is appropriate, staff recommends that council proceed with the sale to John McCracken." And then, finally, in one of the, um, documents in exhibit two for the agenda tonight, entitled Neighborhood Center Breakdown, it stated there, on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, Edgefield got an estimate from SciTech Construction for the actual cost of demolition. The estimate was sixty-eight thousand dollars, so the actual land value of a hundred and twelve thousand, minus the actual cost of demolition, is forty-four thousand actual value. That's in the, uh, final page of exhibit two, uh, which was given to council tonight. So, it's apparent that this proposal estimate from SciTech, uh, is being used to, uh, justify the fifty percent reduction from the appraised price of a hundred thousand to the sales price of fifty thousand dollars. And I would just urge you that if we're gonna rely on a estimate that it come from an independent third-party, uh, there are a number of contractors in the area. Uh, in fact, the town council of Edgefield last night had three proposals to, uh, demolish the, uh, old, uh, finance building there on Main Street. Uh, and I realize the county is not planning to demolish the building. Uh, but, we're being asked to use the figure from the partner of the buyer to justify the sales price of fifty thousand dollars. So, I would ask, before giving this final approval, that, that you get an independent third-party to give you an estimate. I'm not in that business. The sixty-eight thousand dollars may be a very fair price for the demolition. It may be high, it may be low. I'm, I'm, I'm not passing judgment on the actual figure of sixty-eight thousand dollars, but just the fact, uh, that it came from the partner of the buyer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak on ordinance twenty-one, twenty-two, seven ninety-three? Okay, seeing no one else, council, I will close that, uh, public, uh, hearing and move on to old business. So under old business number one, consideration of approval of third reading of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven ninety-two, to replace section, chapter six, animals in the code of ordinance. So I will, uh, ask the administrator if there's anything new or different we need to know from the first two readings.
Well, just a little, several changes to the animal control ordinance were suggested just prior to and during the January council meeting. This resulted in us excluding agriculture from the nuisance part of the ordinance. We clarified the language around adoptions to make it clear that adoptions are the first choice. All animals suitable for adoption will be put up for adoption. And we made the language clear around the issue of property entry during investigations. So all of those changes were made based on public comment. That's all.
Questions or comments from council? Hearing none, I assume we're ready to vote. Is there a motion to give third reading to ordinance, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, seven ninety-two?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Talbert makes the motions, there are second.
Second.
And Ms. Ireland, seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, number two under old business, consideration of approval of second reading of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven ninety-three, an ordinance authorizing the delivery of an agreement of purchase and sale and the conveyance of certain properties between Edgefield County and John McCracken, his successors and signs, parcel number one thirty-seven, oh six, oh two, oh three, oh, zero, zero, zero. So this is second reading, I'll remind everybody, but, uh, Mr. Administrator, I'll call on you to see what you can tell us.
The only thing I'd like to add is, is suggested that we solicited an estimate. I was aware from Mr. McCracken that he was, um, he had obtained an estimate to do an abatement demolition of the building. Um, he did not have a copy of it, so I requested it for public information. Once we received it, we were obligated to share it. The county did not solicit estimates. Um, we, we are not in the business or do not intend to demolish this building ourselves. Um, but when I was aware that there was one available, I asked for it for information purposes. That's all.
So, based on what you just said, correct me if I'm wrong, that Mr. McCracken got the estimate from, what are they called, SciTech? Whatever, however they pronounce it, SciTech. Um, but he got that to see how much it would cost him?
That's correct, we did not solicit that information, um, from Mr. McCracken. Once I was available that there was an estimate, I asked for it. I would suspect that there is a relationship between Mr. McCracken and SciTech, because Mr. McCracken offered the information.
So said a different way, what you're saying is, I think, is that Mr. McCracken was getting an estimate, even if it was from a partner, must have been a good price, I'm assuming, because why would your partner give you a high price? Or give you something you couldn't afford? So I'm just assuming, again, we didn't ask for it, we can't make judgments, but like others, we can speculate, and certainly we can speculate that if he got that estimate from a partner, that was probably a good number and probably an inexpensive number relative to what others may have charged him. So, just FYI, I'm just, I'm speculating, not asking, just, I'm pontificating too. So, anything else we need to know about this one from you two?
The pricing there is common to that type of business. Um, so we have no reason to think it's out of the ordinary. You know, the, the estimate was two hundred thousand dollars, we may question that, but it, it doesn't appear to be out of the ordinary.
Thank you, I'll turn to council, questions or comments from council?
Yes, I have a comment. I just want to say, um, we're not looking at this information that came to us about asbestos removal for justifying the sale of this, we don't need that to justify the sale. What justifies the sale of this property was fifty thousand was all we could get when this property was sold. I don't care if it got an appraisal for a hundred thousand dollars, no one would give us a hundred thousand dollars when this property was sold. Put a price tag on it, fine, but that was not what it would sell for. It sold for fifty thousand, what we asked for. This man came, gave us what we asked for. At that point in time, that's what it was worth, because that's what someone was willing to pay. We don't need this asbestos abatement's information to justify the sale of this. And anybody who has any knowledge, and I have none, about construction, but I know asbestos removal is expensive. And so, I mean, I know that this figure is going to be somewhere around the ballpark anyway, so. And again, I just want to remind people, some people have the impression that this is a new item. This is not, this sale happened many, two, over two years ago now. This happened way back when, and it started even before that. All of, all of the things that we needed to do are done. Mr. McCracken came with a fair offer of what we asked. He gave us the money, we agreed to sell it to him. It's time to sell this property to him and be done.
Other questions or comments from council?
I'd just like to follow up, actually, this thing started back in twenty eighteen from previous councils, it got approved, it got stopped in the courts. The only reason it got stopped was because of the appraiser, the county used was an in-house appraiser. And to quote two people on social media, just because something appraised high also doesn't mean there's a buyer for it, it's set price. Second, uh, comment, appraisals are tools for loan companies. The only real showing value of something is a buyer closing on the item and purchasing it. This is economics one-on-one, it can be appraised at a billion dollars, it doesn't matter if nobody's willing to buy it. So if we got fifty thousand dollars, that's what we're gonna get.
I would like to say also, we've been working with this for a long time, and it just seems like we're being a horse cross to the back. And I think we need to move forward where I am favored of.
Any other comments from council? Okay. Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote, so is there a motion to give a second reading to ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-two, seven ninety-three?
So move.
All right, Mr. Talbert makes the motions, there are second.
Second.
And Dr. Kenyon, seconds, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next council is new business, we've already done number one, so we'll go to number two on new business. This is consideration of approval for Edgefield County Government to co-sponsor the March for Parks event at Bettis Park on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. So I'll ask the administrator if he'd like to tell us a little bit about this one, please.
Yes, the March for Parks is an annual fundraiser at Bettis Park. It's put on by the Bettis Academy Heritage Preservation Team, and they raise funds for Biddle Hall Museum, which is located on the campus. Uh, this is something that the county has done several times before. The effective result of us co-sponsoring the event is that the heritage preservation team will not have to pay the park rental fees, and thus more of the money collected will be able to use, be used for their stated purpose. So staff recommends approval of this request.
And if I'm not mistaken, we've co-sponsored this in the past with them.
That is correct.
Any questions or comments from council?
Yes, I would like to say that I have, uh, attended this March for Parks several times, and I encourage everyone to go out, just to see, uh, the fellowship and what they're raising money for, um, you need to attend the biblical hall museum and see what it's all about, you know? Um, I just think I'm forward, and I'm, if God spare my life, I'd be there again this year.
What do they have out there?
They're litter, everything. Best barbecue.
So food, they got covered.
Food, yeah, covered.
They have entertainment?
Yes, entertainment.
Have stuff for the kids?
Walking, yes, I even walk. I was out of breath when I walked. I enjoy it.
Any other comments, uh, or questions from council? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve co-sponsoring the event as it's been explained? And Dr. Kenyon makes the motions, there are second.
Second.
And Ms. Ireland, seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next council is number three under, uh, new business, consideration of approval of resolution number twenty-one, twenty-three, eleven fifty-five, a contract to acquire parcel one thirty-seven, oh three, oh three, oh twenty-one, zero, 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 located at two twenty-five Jeter Street, currently the Edgefield County Council Chambers, consisting of the building and point two-four acres for sixty-four thousand dollars. So I'll ask the administrator if he will also talk a little bit about this one, please.
Okay, well, to state the obvious, that's the building we're sitting in right now. The nineteen ninety-nine lease agreement contained a twenty-year option to purchase. This was an, an old derelict building, and the county, um, entered into a lease and developed this building as it is today. We put the investment into it, the owner received lease payments, okay? So, the reason that the price the county would pay to purchase this property is sixty-four thousand dollars, and that's so much lower than the average of the two appraisals, that average is two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, is that the formula to calculate the purchase price provides a substantial back credits for the improvements that the county, um, made way back? So that's why we have such a favorable purchase price.
And, uh, the formula you're speaking of is in the contract or the lease agreement or something?
That's in the old nineteen ninety-nine lease agreement, and it's a formula that, that, it had to do with, with an equation using all of the old appraisals, the original ones, the two thousand and seven appraisals and the current appraisals. And, um, there's a, a multiplier that gives us credit for all of the improvements done to this building. And understand, this was just a brick shell, there was no carpet, interior walls, sound system, generator, nothing of that sort. So we're receiving, i- if you look at it, um, one way, the owner of the building received a substantial benefit upfront, because he was able to lease the building that we improved, but we receive the benefit on the back end.
And, um, uh, I believe council has already approved previously that this would be paid for out of the ARPA funds.
That is correct.
So this is a, an ARPA fund purchase. So I'll ask council, any questions or comments on this one?
Good job.
All right, and I'll point out to council, this is a resolution, you can buy property by resolution. So, um, uh, this will be the only one vote tonight, so is there a motion to approve resolution 21231155?
Second.
Ms. Ireland makes the motions, they're second. Dr. Kenyon, seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is number four under new business, consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance 2123795, an ordinance to quitclaim reverted interest in the Manor House property to Kristy Colbreth. So I'll ask the administrator if he'd like to walk us through this one, please.
So in 2019, Edgeville County sold a facility known as Manor House to Kristy Colbreth for redevelopment into an assisted living facility. The deed contained a reversion back to the county in case the project was not completed. In January 2021, a two-year extension was issued. That two-year term is up. Despite significant delays, Ms. Colbreth now has a full set of plans and SCD HECC approval for the project. Staff recommends that Edgeville County quitclaim the deed back to Ms. Colbreth, but maintain a right of reversion, and this new deed will require a set of progress goals that if not met would trigger a reversion yet again. That's all.
And if I understand this correctly, by what we've been voting on tonight, she has to start construction within six months, correct?
That is correct.
And, uh, and she has to complete it within a two-year period from the signing of the deed.
That is correct. Either item would trigger a reversion.
And she, and the buyer has requested that she shall notify county within 45 days of the above referenced deadlines of her progress, so.
That is correct. Progress reports are required.
And I don't believe she is here tonight.
She is not, she was traveling out of state.
So assuming that we pass this tonight, you know, we need to make sure that, um, we have communicated this to her. Because I want to make sure she is aware.
That is correct, but this is first reading. It must go through two, two additional readings.
Right.
And we had that discussion earlier today.
Okay, good, as long as she knows.
She knows.
This is, you know, because she's not here, so I don't want to be surprised even for second or third reading, so. All right, council, I'll open it up. Any questions or comments from council? Wish Kim was still here, I think they had a fire out there yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday.
Well, I think Mr. Albert and I attended a meeting at Upper Savannah, Upper Savannah Council, a government's meeting, um, last Monday, and some of the information we obtained was saying how our population, um, the adults, the aging population is, um, outgrowing the, the young people now, and that our, our state's going to have to turn some gears and we won't be building more schools, we'll be building more nursing homes and assisted living facilities now. And so I think this, um, kind of, uh, pertains exactly to that, and, and so, and we see that already with stuff that we're having to take up now, um, in regards to recreation and whatnot, but, so yeah. There's, there's a need for it, we've been told that, we need to expect that, so if this can happen, I hope she makes it happen this time.
Other questions or comments from council?
But thank you for leaving the parameters in. I think that's very important, that we need these.
I agree.
Parameters still in place, given the history here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to give first reading to ordinance 2123795?
Second.
Mr. Moody makes the motion and Mr. Talbot, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is number five, uh, under new business, consideration of approval of resolution 21231153, approval of a formal agreement with Saluda County in the construction and operation of the animal care and control facility. So again, I'll turn to the administrator and, and ask him to talk about this one, please.
Thank you. Over a month ago, we established a working group that would develop a formal agreement with Saluda County in the construction and operation of the animal care and control facility. Councilman Talbert, Sheriff Roland, Assistant Administrator Clark and myself comprised that group. The agreement assembled by this working group was based on the original 2015 memorandum of understanding, and it establishes Saluda's financial responsibilities in the construction and operation of the facility. Saluda County Council approved this agreement last month. Staff recommends that council approve the formal agreement. And for additional explanation, Saluda's requirement would be to pay 25% of the construction cost of the facility. Right now, that is around 166,000 plus a few thousand for change orders. And they would also have to pay fees just as Edgeville County would pay fees. So a Saluda County resident whose dog was picked up, um, that resident would pay the same fees as an Edgeville County resident would pay because of this agreement. That's all.
Questions or comments from council? I know we've talked about this in the past and read through all the details. So if there's no questions or comments from council, is there a motion to approve resolution 21231153?
Don't move the chair.
Mr. Talbot makes the motions, they're second.
Second.
And Ms. Moody, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next council, we'll move to the second public comment period. I'll ask the clerk if there is, I think there are a few people signed up for that one. And while the clerk is bringing it to me, I will remind everybody that the public comment section is, uh, five minutes maximum per person. Um, you are not allowed to, uh, cede your time to anyone else. Um, and the, um, clerk will tell us when you hit the four-minute mark and then when you hit the five-minute mark. So with that, we will start in the order you signed in, and so it looks like Joanne Pace is up first.
There, can you hear me? Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for getting back to me all day long. I appreciate it. Um, I am new here to your county and your state. Absolutely love it. Everything I've heard about southern hospitality is so real. Um, can't say enough about the warmth that I have received since I've been here. But I am very surprised at the litter. I cannot drive down any road that I do not see all kinds of stuff. I don't know if you can answer questions, but do you have any plans for litter cleanup in your county? I was very happy to read that I was in the safest county. I read that months ago. Um, then I Googled and I found out South Carolina is number one for garbage. Number one in, in the United States. So I'm just curious, we clean our own neighborhood up. Uh, we try and clean along Paces Creek. It's very long and half of us are old and retired, getting ready for the rest homes you're talking about. The others are working, they don't want to do that on weekends, so do you have any plans for litter?
But not only that, I'll, I'll, I'll turn to you two, you have all the details of what we do right now.
Okay, so, good news is, yes, there are plans. Um, we have a litter control officer. Um, he has written probably about 11 tickets here just recently. Um, and the new judge, Judge Hitt, is giving community service time for everybody that gets a littering ticket. It's who we then turn around and use to pick up litter. Um, there are circumstances, of course, you know, if it's an elderly person or, you know, a pregnant person or, you know, some, somebody we can't put out on the side of the road, they just pay a fine. But for the most part, they're being given community service. Um, we've recently hired two part-time people whose entire job will be to go around the county picking up trash. Uh, that will be the only thing that they do. In next year's budget, we will be moving that to full-time position. Um, and that person will be assigned a vehicle and all they will do is pick up trash. State of South Carolina recently has put several billion dollars aside for the state, um, litter pickup effort. And as of a meeting, I say two weeks ago, roughly, uh, they put $360,000 on the table for Edgeville County to use, uh, for contracting on state roads, uh, to pick up garbage. We have worked with the DOT to set up a schedule for garbage pickup that will go ahead of their lawn mowers. Um, the idea is to, uh, pick it up before they chop it into 16 million pieces. Um, next year, that, that, that amount of money is supposed to raise to a little over $500,000. Um, we don't intend to leave any of that money on the table, we're going to spend every dollar of it. Unfortunately, it is not a fund that we can leverage directly, as in the county can't hire somebody, pick up trash and then get that paid out. It has to be a licensed contracting company to do it. Um, other such regulations, but we are going to use those funds until they run out. So between council's efforts, um, to hire people, our litter controls officers' effort to get community service members, and the state's efforts to hire contractors, um, a lot of trash in Edgeville County should be getting off the roads here shortly.
You won't go back to using, um, inmates like you used to? I heard you used to at one time.
So unfortunately, and I, I could let the sheriff speak on this probably better than I can, but trustees are a rare thing. Uh, there's still a lot of COVID restrictions and things like that in place. Um, the federal government has released a few work groups, um, but it's, it's a very difficult program to utilize right now.
Do you communicate with the Department of Transportation with it? Because I'm very curious, and you should see this, the plastic bags that are still hanging from the signs and, and they've ripped and they've torn and they've blown away. They, I can't figure out why they don't remove them or rather let them shred. I'm sorry, petty maybe, but it, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. The second and only other person who signed up is Susan Steele. Susan?
I'm here in support of what Joanne said. I grew up in Greenville, and we'd come down to Augusta to see my grandparents, cousins, whatever. And I don't remember, and I'm not picking on anybody, I don't remember Edgeville being as full of litter as it was then. And I was just wondering if there's any kind of citizens' education or something to incorporate people where they have more pride about their community.
I'm not aware of anything particularly unless y'all are.
So occasionally, we do have, uh, community pickup events and things like that. Um, we also promote the Adopt a Highway program, and we work with, um, Green Palmetto, which is a s- state litter trash type program, where we will provide citizens with bags, trash grabbers. Uh, we'll pick up the garbage that they bag up. So for example, if they want to go have a project, um, they can contact our office, set it up with Randy. And then once they're finished picking up, instead of having to haul the garbage off themselves, they can leave the bags on the side of the road. Um, and we'll pick it up for them. We have also hosted a coup, uh, one of those events ourselves. Um, the, the actual county itself and our employees, we put it out there. We had quite a few citizens picked up. I think we picked up, um, 80 some odd bags that day, um, and that was off just one street. Litter is a huge problem, not just in Edgeville, but, but statewide. Um, I think that's one of the primary reasons that the state has put so much funding aside. Um, that being said, our litter control officer personally picks up about 60 tons of garbage a year. Countless mattresses, furniture, rights tickets, um, and in some cases, in some places, you can't even tell it's made of dent. Um, it, it is a big problem and we are working to address it.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the people who signed up for the second public. If there's no objection from council, you need to come to the podium. You tell us your name and such, please.
My name is Rachel, and I live over off Sable. And I hope y'all are having a great evening. I, I work until 9:00 PM, so most times I unfortunately can't really come to these meetings. I wanted to ask a few questions. I know that the subdivision is going over close to Sable, like right at that corner of Sunnybrook and Sable. Um, the fire hydrant rules laws, uh, you know, around that got changed after it was approved. And when it was approved, it didn't actually, it, it didn't actually apply legally to those rules. Then it was changed, and this is all in the meeting minutes. What I'm wondering is, um, you know, did, did we assess any kind of value about the woods around there? Because there's, there's just tons of woods and, uh, people who live in those woods. And if we change, you know, fire hydrant rules after the fact, did anyone go in there and assess that in case a fire is to break out?
I want you to address that, please.
Okay, so first off, the fire hydrant rule, and the primary reason it was changed is there's no water supply out there.
Right.
So if Edgeville County were to require them to put fire hydrants in, that would put a legal requirement on us to take water to them, which would cost the county tens of millions of dollars to, to provide them the water. Um, a- and that's the primary reason that, that rule got changed. Second thing of note, we did not approve the subdivision. It got denied in the planning commission. It was taken to court and fought, and we lost that case. Um, a lot of it is in Aiken County, some of it is in Edgeville County. Unfortunately, as far as, uh, you know, environmental concerns goes, that falls under the Department of Health and Environmental Control.
I mean, forget the environment, people can burn, people can burn down in, in those woods, but, I mean.
Yes, I mean, and, and I'm, I'm sure you've lived in Edgeville long enough to know that we set our fire, our woods on fire every year anyway. Um, prescribed burning is a South Carolina tradition, uh, which keeps us from being California every year. Um, but that being said, uh, you know, South Carolina DHEC is the environmental control. So one, even though it got overturned, we didn't approve it, it got overturned. They will still be treated exactly like any other subdivision that comes in. So their stormwater pollution plans, their environmental plans, their civil plans, all of that stuff still has to go to DHEC, still has to be approved, and we still have to receive those notifications. Um, we cannot, if they meet all of those requirements, we can't put a stop work on them. But if for some reason they fail one of those requirements going forward, then we would stop work on the Edgeville County portion.
Well, with the fire hydrant change, I mean, it's like it was changed after the fact because the court approved it, but wouldn't, shouldn't that have stopped? The court may have proven it because after all, if they don't have waters to, to stop the houses from burning, the woods are going to catch on fire. I mean, what do, what do we do here?
Apparently, the judge did not feel that the reasons, uh, for denial were acceptable. I mean, that's all I can really say. We, we did not approve of the way it was designed. We did deny it. It didn't work out in our favor. Unfortunately, there's not much we can do about that.
All right, and, um, how, now when you mentioned the DHEC looks at the water, the sewage and all that, you know, from the septic and the water table, I mean, is there any testing that gets done to make sure our water table isn't going to dry up? Or all the septic tanks isn't going to pollute the table to where the water's not even usable?
That's a question for DHEC, not for me. Unfortunately, I, I'm not an engineer in.
Right.
In, in water or sewer, I don't know enough about it to, to say one way or the other. Um, they will have to have testing done on every lot and provide us with an approval from DHEC. How DHEC does that testing, what kind of approval they do, that's, that's, that's in their wheelhouse. I don't understand it well enough to even answer the question, to be honest.
Well, so what I'm wondering is, um, if we're approving, thank you, if we're approving subdivisions without that knowledge, who's going to be held? who's going to be held accountable for my, for one mine and two hundred other people?
South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Services. They are the approving authority. We have no legal authority to overrule them. They are the state.
There's also a conflict of interest on the council with the developer. Typically, when there's a conflict of interest and two hundred people lose their water, attorneys like those stakes. So I just think it's wise that we really look at these developments before we approve them.
One comment on that. Obviously, on the planning commission, if you have a developer or a real estate agent or anybody else who has some sort of land interest or obligation, they are not allowed to vote on anything that they have a financial interest in. They must recuse themselves from the vote. In this particular property in case, they got denied, so it's a little bit irrelevant. But the developer that was on the board at the time, the real estate agent that was on the board at the time, neither one of them had any financial involvement with this, with this project at all. So, and if they did, they would be required by law to recuse themselves from a vote.
I appreciate the explanation. I'm so worried about everybody losing their water out there.
I understand, and you can take.
Hopefully, y'all consider that with future developments.
Take that question to the, the Health Department.
Well, they, they don't have to make that decision if the, if, if future developments are not allowed.
We, we tried not to allow this. I think the whole point is that.
Unfortunately, we can't, e- even if we saw that there was a water or sewer issue present on the property, we could not deny them based on that, even if we saw it ourselves. Because we have no regulatory authority on that matter. All we could do is direct it to DEHAC and hope that DEHAC rules correctly.
But I, I do hope y'all look into that and maybe set parameters around that so y'all have the regulatory authority. I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, there is no one else signed up for the public comment period, so I will close that and open up reports from county council members. Is there anybody who has anything to report tonight?
I have a report on behalf of Dr. Kenyon and myself. It's regarding broadband. So I actually spoke to Mr. Gary Stukesbury before I came to the meeting tonight, and he gave me a little update I wanted to share with everybody. So he said that they are finishing up the Lick Fort substation project. The Edgefield substation is completed. They are currently at the Sage Mill substation, which services Edgefield County, and they're about a month out there. The goal is to have all the unserved and underserved Aiken County co-op customers done by the end of December. They are currently, they have what he called a small army working on this project. They've hired two hundred and seventy-five people that are working, just contractors on this. And he's, he said they're going quite well. He asked me to remind that we have not forgotten about Dominion folks, but the priority is to make sure that all of Aiken co-op customers are service-first. And so that's where we are right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other council member have any report tonight on anything?
I was going to make a comment and it was going to deal with litter, and I didn't change it because those two ladies, I was already going to talk about it. But anyway, riding around these past couple of weeks, I seen some people in the lower section, saw a man and woman on Woodlong Road picking up litter. Now, do y'all furnish vests for? Okay, these, these must not have been under the court order because they didn't have vests on. And then there's a gentleman that, that works Murray Road and Mealing Road that Mr. Hickson's talked about before. But anybody who wants to pick up litter or whatever, Doc will furnish you the bags and, and like, and anything else you need to pick upers. So I just want to thank those that are out there doing it, going unnamed. We appreciate it.
Anything else from council? All right, thank you for, for council. Then I'll turn to the county administrator for his report.
Chairman Campbell, we do have one more commenter that submitted their comments in writing. So I would like to ask Aretha to do that.
I'm sorry, I missed that. So yes, I didn't know that. So I'm going to revert, council, we'll just jump back if there's no objection, back to public comments. We did have somebody who sent an email saying, would it be read tonight? So I'll ask the clerk if she would mind reading that, please.
This letter is from Scott Cooper, who asked this to be read during the second public comment section tonight, since he could not be in attendance. I hope this note finds each of you doing well. I appreciate each of you and the time you invest serving Edgefield County. I want to provide two additional thoughts, which have come to mind since my January tenth, twenty twenty-three email as you prepare for your retreat, planning the next session of county council. First is the issue of utilizing consultants and finding individuals with expertise in a specific area who will lend their industry knowledge to the county, either in a paid or unpaid capacity. It has always been my view that whenever possible, it's best to utilize such expertise as close to the county and state level as possible. As we all know, when we began a comprehensive plan process in twenty eighteen, based on those who submitted proposals to our RFP for a consultant, we utilized a team from Atlanta. A few constituents didn't like that selection. However, that company brought over one hundred years of combined, combined experience to Edgefield when we hired them. And they helped every individual who participated in the process to grow in their knowledge of planning and development. I will submit the same is true when county council is tasked to fill various boards, which report to this body. During my time of service, I believe that it was important to have a broad cross-section of citizens serving on various boards. I also believe that it is also important to ask individuals who have expertise in the industry, they were being asked to serve. I know that there are a few constituents who are, who are opposed to, and perhaps have even written to you about the need to remove anyone who works in a professional role as a developer from our planning commission. I will submit to you that the reasons to have a couple such individuals on our seven-member planning commission who are Edgefield County residents are the same reasons listed above. Expertise, which Edgefield County requires if we want to grow in a well-planned way. A lot could be written about the process of recusal from votes and statements of economic interest, which ensures they serve in an ethical way. Two such individuals currently serving, Mr. Todd Brown and Mr. Brett McNeil, have invested a tremendous amount of time and have institutional knowledge of the last several years, which I believe are needed as we, as a county, continue to build on what has been executed thus far. It would be a shame for the county to lose their expertise when their terms expire, if they are willing to continue serving. Second is the issue, idea of the county council planning a field trip and perhaps including a planning commission. There are numerous examples of communities which could be visited where planned growth, considering the importance of economic development for both rural and non-rural areas of counties, where the planning was executed exceptionally well, as well as examples where the execution left something to be desired, to put it nicely. I'd encourage consideration of such an educational field trip for the county council. I believe that expense has great potential to yield huge dividends for the future of the citizens of Edgefield County. Thank you for your time, and again, I thank each of you for your service. Scott Cooper.
Thank you. I apologize for forgetting that we had a, a letter. So I'll look at the, the clerk and the administrator. Anything else I need to remember that I've forgotten here tonight? Okay, then I'll turn to the administrator for his report then.
On the topic of the animal control, animal care and control facility, construction has begun on the new building. It is progressing rapidly. The foundation has been poured, the steel frame is up, and the building should be dried in by tomorrow, meaning the exterior walls and the roof will be complete. So it is moving very quickly. Our next step will be to develop the policies and procedures for operating the facility. As part of the budget process, we are in budget season. We have been discussing staffing needs for the new facility. The cost for staffing will be completely offset by the savings realized from not having to pay Aiken County to our, except our animals. On the law enforcement facility, it's been a little slower going, much bigger facility. The contractors have been battling a very wet site from the start, but the weather lately has been favorable. Progress is picking up. They are currently preparing the foundation. Footers have been poured. We are going to begin taking pictures of these facilities. I'll send them out to council. But also we'll post them on our websites. We can keep the public up to date on these projects.
One more.
Also, just for public interest, our contractor is going to be doing flyovers of the property all throughout construction. So a time lapse of the construction will be available for public consumption, which we'll probably post on our YouTube or, or website or somewhere for those who actually want to watch it.
Thank you, Doc. We are also partnering with the town of Edgefield on a soccer field drainage project. We've talked about this before. We are going to begin this project next Monday, weather permitting. Again, this is a joint project between the county, county staff and the town of Edgefield staff. And Mr. Hudson is frequently at these meetings, has graciously donated a large quantity of drainage pipe and fittings left from some of his previous jobs. He's apparently in this, has been in this business. So we look forward to finally dealing with that site. As someone who coached soccer for, I think, sixteen seasons, two seasons a year, and went home with wet feet almost every time, this is long overdue. So we're looking forward to that. That's all.
Any questions from council to the administrator? Okay, if not, then we'll move to my comments. I just have one item tonight. I want to announce that county council will have a budget workshop on March twenty-second at six PM, right here in council chambers. We do one bu- budget workshop each year. And let me remind everyone what this called meeting entails. First, council doesn't vote on anything at this meeting. It is still a draft budget, and that is in the adminis, that's in the administrator's hands. We take the time to go through the entire budget to give all of us, that's the council and the public, a chance to see what's proposed to be in and out of the budget for the next fiscal year, which begins July one. This is not a public input session on March twenty-second. Those are part of the three readings from April through June. However, the public is always invited and encouraged to attend all our meetings. During the workshop, we will hear from any county elected officials or county department heads who need help, who need to help us clarify any items or tell us information we need to know to recommend a change before we go to first reading. So that date again is March twenty-second at six PM, right here. Council, that is all I have, and since there is no other business to conduct, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Talbert makes the motion. And Mr. Moody seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.